Okay. Good evening and welcome. My name is Kathy Thompson, President of the Red Clay School District Board of Education. The board is thankful you have come out tonight and grateful to have you here. Welcome to the 2020-2021 school year. With one and a half weeks under our belts remotely, I know you've all done a fantastic job. Thank you very much for your hard work. The September 16, 2020 Board Meeting of the Red Clay School District is called to order. It is 7:00 PM. The information regarding this meeting, including information on how to access the meeting electronically, was published on September 9, 2020, on the Red Clay School District website under the Public Notices section. Just so we are all clear on the protocols due to COVID. Everyone should remain masked at all times, even when speaking, so no one is to remove their masks. Masks are available if you do not have one. Everyone should remain socially distanced. You probably saw the DPH signage that you should not enter if you have any symptoms consistent with COVID, wear masks, et cetera. Non-household members should have at least three seats between each other, and every other row is blocked off. At public comment, again, please keep your mask on and be cognizant of the six-foot red sneakers on the floor. You probably saw them, there's stickers of red sneakers on the floor while waiting to speak. So now, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have a moment of silence. A Red Clay Nutrition employee, Kathy Flacco, some knew her as Kathy Duper, passed away unexpectedly this past week. Kathy worked for the nutrition department since 2009, with most of her time spent working at Forest Oak Elementary School. She also worked at AI Middle School, Skyline Middle School, Heritage Elementary School, Baltz Elementary School, and most recently, AI High School. It was very shocking news, and she will be missed by her colleagues and friends. A moment of silence for Ms. Flacco. Thank you. And now, I will accept a motion to accept the agenda as provided. Is there a motion?
So move.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo, I think, seconded first. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is set. Next, we move on to student, staff, and community recognition. So Ms. Taylor Greene, you're up.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? We're good, Tony? So thank you, Mrs. Thompson. In Red Clay, we recently changed our official hashtag, and if you haven't heard, it's yay red clay. We picked this hashtag because, one, obviously, it rhymes, and that's always fun; and, two, because we hear from family after family, teacher after teacher, that they never get tired of good news. And now, more than ever, we are dedicated to celebrating success in Red Clay schools, the students, staff members, community partners, and many others who are coming together to do amazing things in this school district. Tonight, we have the pleasure of celebrating an elite group of educators who have been named as one of the best, or some of the best, in the entire state of Delaware. You may recall that this time last year, we saw two Red Clay teachers make Delaware Today's Top Teachers list. Pretty impressive when you consider that there were only 11 slots on the whole list. But this year, I'm thrilled to share that we have doubled that number, and we have four Red Clay teachers who made the list. Yay, Red Clay! Nominated by peers, parents, families, and the students themselves, these outstanding educators exemplify the best in K-12 education. I'm going to introduce them one by one and tell you a little bit about them, and then they will come down to receive a Red Clay Certificate of Recognition and pose for a photo in front of the stage. So we're skipping our group photo, but hopefully we can get the board members in the background. And the certificates, I believe, were all sanitized. So I'll look to the superintendent for direction on that of whether we're actually handing those. They're up there. Okay, so first up, the first Red Clay teacher to be named a 2020 Top Teacher by Delaware Today is Odette Fuentes, a second-grade teacher at Austin Beach Elementary School. A 10-year veteran at Baltz, Odette had to rethink her lesson plans when it came to suddenly teaching online last spring. She said it felt like being a new teacher all over again. Like many teachers, Odette had to overcome several challenges last spring during the school's rapid response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Language was among the hurdles. Like Odette, many of her students come from homes where Spanish is the primary language. Pre-COVID, she translated in the classroom when needed and sent assignments home in English and Spanish, but this proved more difficult in Zoom sessions. Still, she was delighted at how quickly her second graders adapted to their new circumstances. They even learned Zoom etiquette. They muted themselves, turned their cameras off instead of walking around with them, and even learned how to use the Zoom chatroom. She was so proud of them. Odette's favorite teaching tool is Class JoJo, which allows students to post teacher-approved stories and chat with her via direct message. It also translates English to Spanish, which is incredibly helpful to her class. On behalf of all of us in Red Clay, congratulations, Odette Fuentes, a 2020 Top Teacher. Come on down, Odette. Great job, Odette! Our second 2020 Top Teacher is kindergarten teacher Megan Manlove from Cook Elementary School. One could say Megan answered the call of teaching. She comes from a family of teachers, and she fell in love with the idea of being a teacher as a little girl visiting her mom's kindergarten classroom. To Megan, kindergarten is a magical year where you can see growth on so many different levels. That growth challenged her in March, when school shifted to a virtual setting. Megan wasn't worried about her students on an academic level, as she knew their families would do everything required of them. It was the social and emotional impact of not seeing classmates in person that concerned her. So she set up Zoom calls where kids could hang out, an experience she describes as a talent show with 22 performers at once, where students showed off their newest dance moves and coolest toys. She says Zoom was so successful because the students already had a bond from the time they spent in the classroom. She hopes to recreate that success this fall. So congratulations to 2020 Top Teacher Megan Manlove. Way to go, Megan! Next up, our third Red Clay teacher to be named a 2020 Top Teacher by Delaware Today is Dr. Robert Naylor from Conrad Schools of Science. Rob is one of those multi-hyphenates who I'm pretty sure doesn't sleep, but his primary roles at Conrad are teaching high school biomed and digital media, and also serving as Assistant Athletic Director. Right from the beginning of his 13-year career, Rob found teaching to be a beneficial and gratifying experience. A Red Clay grad himself, Rob always found success in school, since it was a place where he was comfortable. He enjoys being inside the walls of a school and connecting with students within those same walls, experiencing the successes of all involved. When the school year was interrupted last March, Rob was ready. He's an ed tech guru, and he was able to incorporate current events into his lesson plans. In addition to teaching, Rob coaches the school swim team and hosts the annual Conrad Biomed B+ Foundation Dinner to benefit families fighting childhood cancer. He credits the district, his colleagues, and families he works with every day for his success. As he describes it, "Teaching at Conrad is similar to being in pediatric medicine at Nemours and AI DePont Hospital for Children, or being in fashion in New York City or Paris. You just can't ask for a better opportunity." Congratulations to Dr. Rob Naylor, a 2020 Top Teacher. Good job, Rob! Finally, our fourth teacher to make Delaware Today's 2020 Top Teachers List is Jermaine Wilson, who teaches STEM at HB DePont Middle School. Jermaine always had a deep love for teaching. He just took the long way around to doing it as a full-time career. After spending 18 years in corporate America, working in finance and the medical field, when the opportunity came to actually get into education, he took it. He recalls that back in high school, he had a lot of great teachers who took the time to teach him and help him find his interest in different things he wanted to do. They made an impact on him, and he wanted to share that same experience. Jermaine also benefited from parents who fostered his curiosity, including a father who owned a lighting shop and encouraged him to dismantle things and try to put them back together. That natural curiosity piqued his interest on how things work, although he admits that some of the things he took apart didn't always go back together correctly. That experience gravitated him towards STEM. After advancing into management roles and his corporate career, he moved easily into training and ultimately, public ed. Congratulations, and come on down, Jermaine Wilson. All right. Good job, Jermaine. Well done to all four of our 2020 Top Teachers, named by the Delaware Today in Red Clay. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the teachers. We're so very proud of you. Thank you very much, and you do a lot for Red Clay. Thank you. Now, we move on to public comment. And again, thank you for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and share your thoughts. Under Board Policy 2006, the board encourages the staff and community to share concerns concerning school issues and educational programs. Sharing can be done verbally, in writing, and by speaking at the meeting. We have received lots of emails this month yet again. Under Board Policy 2006, the board shall provide a period of up to 30 minutes at each board meeting for public comments, which may be extended at the discretion of the board. Speakers are requested to give a written copy of their remarks to the superintendent. Speakers are limited to a three-minute time period. The time is shown on the podium with green, yellow, and red lights. Green, of course, means go. Yellow means, I think you have 30 seconds left, and red means stop. The board encourages speakers with comments about specific individuals to share them with the superintendent, who shall provide the speaker with the procedure for submitting such remarks, but will permit public comments that are in compliance with this policy. The board, as you know, generally shall not respond directly to a speaker at a public meeting. We've typically requested our superintendent to follow up with speakers. Again, given COVID, remember to wear your mask while speaking, and you will notice the mic has a mask on it, too. So please speak up as your voice needs to carry through two masks, and you probably saw that with Ms. Greene. And remember the red sneakers to give space to others that are on the floor. So our first speaker is Ms. Kristin Stone. Welcome, Ms. Stone. Oh, they're not up there? And I'm sorry, the lights are not there, so how are we doing the timing?
So, Mr. Clemens, can you, is it up on the screen?
Oh, it's on screen, but they may not be able to see that. How, what, it's going to be on this screen, so they may not be able to see it.
So can we just signal a 30-second signal, please, once they get you? We can.
It might make it more sense. Yeah, it might make more sense.
Dr. Brum, I'll just turn the podium around, please.
So you will then, speakers, you will notice then, up on the screen, there will be, your time will show, and you'll, at three minutes, I guess, we cut it off. It's, where is it?
So don't be able to see it both. So just pull the mic toward the podium, so whoever the first public commentator is can make their comments.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion. Ms. Stone? Ms. Kristin Stone? I guess Ms. Stone isn't here. So the next person is Ms. Anne Boudashack. Okay, Ms. Boudashack. Can you see the timer wherever you are? But you can see the timer?
It's not on.
Okay. There you go. Okay, just wanted to make sure you could see that.
Oh, I'm going to need every second of my three minutes.
I figured.
If the timer could restart, that'd be great.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Greene, board members, fellow Red Clay community members, my name is Anne Boudashack. My son is a first grader at North Star. First, I want to take a moment to praise our district's teachers. They are working tirelessly, showing up each and every day eager to do their best. Thank you to each and every teacher in our district. Your love for our children and your devotion to education is sincerely recognized by your students' families. The threat of this pandemic is real. I respect the severity of the situation our nation, our world, is facing. Research since last spring teaches us that the threat can be mitigated, not eliminated entirely, but mitigated significantly if proper safety precautions are in place. You are all well-versed in what those safety precautions are, but from what I understand, you're having difficulty logistically implementing those measures so that buildings can open once again, not just for the paid childcare that's already taking place in those buildings, but for the free and appropriate public education guaranteed to our students. Logistics is not my field of expertise, but I do know that the task of opening our schools' doors for education is not insurmountable. This is possible with the proper planning. Districts across the country, even those in places more devastatingly attacked by this virus than Delaware, have made it happen safely. Has our district done its due diligence? Have you hired a logistics consultant or firm to find a way? I desperately hope the answer to that question is yes, because doing anything less than everything is unacceptable. While we wait for face-to-face learning to resume, we need to take a close look at what the remote instruction Red Clay is offering looks like. My husband and I shared our anticipated concerns during public comment last month. Mr. Greene, in your public comment that, or I'm sorry, in your update that followed, you assured us that the district would not simply take what was happening in the classroom and transfer it to a live video call. That remote learning would be an appropriate balance of asynchronous and synchronous learning. After that meeting, remote learning schedules were released. The district has not delivered on its promise. Instead, if my family adhered to my first-grader schedule, he would log into Zoom for live instruction each day at 8:45 AM and not log out again until 2:00 PM. What does this long day of live instruction accomplish? It definitely holds the teachers accountable for their time, but we all know, at least I hope we all know, that much more goes into teaching than face-to-face time, and that our teachers are professionals who do not need their time micromanaged and so closely monitored. What takes all day to accomplish in a classroom can take just an hour or two to accomplish remotely. This would provide our educators with an unprecedented opportunity to spend their time meeting our children's individual needs. One silver lining of remote learning, when remote learning is done right.
Ms. Boudashack, please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boudashack. Next is Ms. Rachel Sterrett. Welcome, Ms. Sterrett. Sorry, I lost the name on the page.
You got it. Good evening, Mr. Greene, fellow board members, and fellow Red Clay community. My name is Rachel Sterrett, and my daughter's a first grader at Linden Hill. Firstly, I'm blown away by the effort, the patience, and the creativity of my first-grade daughter's teacher. Teaching first graders to use Zoom independently is no easy task, and she did it and has done every lesson so far beautifully. Secondly, I strongly oppose the district's decision to go full virtual with a six-hour day schedule for elementary school-age children. Subtracting her breaks, my daughter is online for a little less than five hours a day, which is almost three times the recommended time the National Board of Professional Teachers suggests for kids this age group. My husband and I knew as soon as we got the schedule that our daughter would participate in two hours of Zooming max in the mornings, and then go and play and be a normal six-year-old for the remainder of the day. We refuse to have attendance assessed when the schedule is so far greater than what's recommended by the experts. This schedule is asking too much of everyone involved. I understand that this schedule may work well for some, but it doesn't work for us. The National Board of Professional Teachers also states that the virtual day cannot and should not resemble the in-person physical day. I also want to stress the fact that this schedule is asking way too much of your teachers' energy and time. Thirdly, the CDC states on its website that, quote, "Extended school closure is harmful to children." It states that extended is longer than three weeks. The virtual six-week schedule proposed by the district is double that recommendation. I am both puzzled and concerned that Red Clay has veered so far from the recommended standards. The district is clearly not following what is recommended as what's best for our children. I understand that there is a lot at play here. I also understand that what works for some families doesn't work for other families. However, considering our neighboring states have figured out a way to open public schools safely, it seems to me that Red Clay may not have done their due diligence to adequately prepare and make it work, so that the best outcome for all, teachers, guardians, and children alike, could have been achieved. It pains me to see the disparity currently between private and public school students and their families. To paint you a picture, my friends' lives whose children attend private school have gone largely unchanged, while my husband and I, who work for ourselves, have had to scramble to put our children in other programs that cost a lot of money so we can work. We don't sit at a desk all day, and our child can't Zoom with us running around, so when she is Zooming, we are sitting at home with her not working. What happens to other families that can't afford these resources? We have a duty to figure out a way to open the public schools so that this disparity doesn't grow and grow, and these families and their children...
20 seconds.
I'm sorry. Thank you. So that these, so the disparity doesn't grow and grow, and these families and their children don't fall on more hardship in the time of an already stressful and financially-strained pandemic. I sincerely hope the board draws on all resources possible with the main goal of reopening school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sterrett. The next speaker, and I may not say this name right, is Ms. Lori Kazmarz. Not present.
Ms. Stone and Kazmarz are online.
Okay.
But they were told they had to be present to make public comment.
Okay. Yep, that was in the public notice. Okay, next is Ms. Heather Oerly. O-R-L-Y, Oerly. Welcome, Ms. Oerly.
Thank you. And no need to give me the 10 or 20-second interruption at the end. I got, I'm okay. I'm a graduate of the district, a registered nurse, but most importantly, I'm a mom of three kids, a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a kindergartner. After six days of remote learning, I stand before you tonight to tell you this is not working for me, my children, or my family, and to request a plan of what is being done to get my kids back in school by Monday, October 19. I'm hoping my in-person plea will be heard, as it does not seem any online survey I've completed has been. I want my kids in school. I'll drive them if the district cannot provide transportation. I approached this six weeks of remote learning with as much enthusiasm and positivity I could muster for my kids. I spent hours with each child to set up a separate and individualized learning space, which is a luxury not every parent in the district has to provide. My need for my kids to go back to school in person is not due to a failure on my part or their teachers to set them up for remote learning success. This is not because I'm frustrated over some technology glitch. My need for them to return to in-person school is based on my observations over the last six days. I have observed firsthand how the district, school board, and superintendent are failing my kids. My kindergartner is bored and frustrated. The AAP, or American Academy of Pediatrics, their recommendation for screen time for children of this age, no more than one hour of high-quality children's programming per day. So the two hours and 35 minutes you have my child in front of a computer screen puts her at risk, according to the AAP, for obesity and sleep deprivation. I find this unacceptable. My kindergartner throughout the school day says she's bored, wants my Zoom class going to end. She had a meltdown the other day trying to write a letter, because she's not in person with her teacher, the teacher cannot manipulate her little fingers the way they need to be. This is drastically different from the behavior she displayed during her three years of in-person preschool education. My fourth grader also verbalizes boredom, so much so she colored her fingernails with markers the other day, a behavior I have not seen in her since preschool. School is her place to shine, and she can't do that now. Her not being in school is jeopardizing her social and emotional well-being. Remote learning is harming her. My sixth grader, my confident learner, who in the past has been described as a leader in the classroom by teachers, has now described anxiety over speaking on a Zoom call. She has never had a fear of speaking, but now she can't because social learning is giving her, or remote learning is giving her social anxiety. They're frustrated that they hear each other when they're trying to focus. Well, I can't help that. Our home, our safe haven, has now become classroom, lunchroom, cafeteria. Finally, professionally, but most importantly, family life has been impacted. I can no longer work during the week because I have to be home. I have to work almost every weekend. I'm missing their softball games. I'm missing weekend family time. Remote learning is eroding my family life. In closing, remote learning is not sustainable past six weeks for my emotional, social well-being of my family. I want my kids back in school and would love to know the executable plan to make that happen by October 19.
Thank you, Ms. Oerly. Mr. Phil Oerly? Welcome.
My wife gave an impassioned plea on what it's doing to our family, so I'll spare you the duplicate of that. I'm just concerned, you know, the fact that we're putting a mask over top of a spit guard on a microphone speaks to the fact that we're not listening to the science. The science says there's no reason our kids should not be in school. The science says that half of us have been immune to this since 2015. 1,500 pediatricians in England sent a letter, said, "Send the kids to school." Europe is all back. Sweden never quit school. Sweden's got the lowest death rate, the lowest infection rate in all of Europe right now. They're in better shape than 17 U.S. states, including Delaware, because lockdowns don't stop people like my wife from going into the nursing homes, where all the deaths occur. They're kids. Statistics says that the risk of COVID to them is one in a million. To us, it's one in 200,000. Your chances of dying being struck by lightning is better than dying from COVID. We all drove here today. Our risk from that is one in 108. 108. We take these risks every day, every day, without thinking twice about it. We wouldn't have shut this down thinking it was any worse than the flu, which it's proven not to be. Certainly to our children. Our children are 10 to 20 times less likely to die from this than a normal flu, yet we don't shut down for the flu. What is your plan to put us back in school? Are we going to start listening to the science, or are we going to continue with the theatrics? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oerly. Next is Ms. Ashley Sakura. Welcome.
My name is Ashley, and I have four kids in elementary school at Red Clay. My children span between the ages of six and nine, two of which have IEPs with goals related back to being born at 26 weeks gestational, and the first half of their life tied up in our state's foster care system. As you can imagine for any parent, our commitment is to manage their needs from an emotional and educational standpoint, all while loving them fiercely and teaching them to be contributors, most of which has been impossible via a virtual setting. We have continued to make the choice for public school, as we have found safety in the teachers with the attention to detail in all of the things I said above. On the subject of kids with IEPs, especially are ones with needs to address physical and fine motor delays, I would like the board and Mr. Greene to please give me answers on the following questions. What steps do we take when we can visibly see our children frustrated over having to use physical ranges of motion while on screen? In many districts across the country, our kids with developmental delays and IEPs in general, the parents were given a choice, a choice for those kids to pursue virtual or hybrid instruction. Why was this not an option in Red Clay? At the end of this last school year, in an end-of-the-year progress... At the end of this last school year, in an end-of-the-year progress update to my son's IEP, and I want you to listen to this, the therapist noted in which I quote, "attempted via teletherapy, but it was difficult for him to follow along to accurately complete the steps remotely." He had been making steady progress towards this goal when we were working onsite at school. So my last and most important question to you, why, if it was notated that the platform in which services were rendered were not working, did we not try and give my child a different platform in which to succeed? You see, as a parent, I was not given a choice. I wasn't given an option to change the course of direction in which my child can receive services. I wasn't told why my voice wasn't heard when I filled out countless surveys over the summer pleading we come up with a safe way to return to school. Our kids need to be back in school, and we need to see the plan in place to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Sekira. Next is Ms. Nicole Schneider. Okay, I guess Ms. Schneider is not here. So then, Mr. Stephen Fackenthal. Welcome, Mr. Fackenthal.
Hello there. Good evening, board. Thank you so much. Ms. Budacek, thank you for those comments, because so many teachers feel exactly the same way. My name is Stephen Fackenthal, music teacher at Ritchie Elementary and vice president of the Red Clay Education Association, although tonight I come here to speak as an individual. I wanted to share my complete utter frustration, disappointment, and shock that after months of record-high participation of public comments in these meetings, that this board would then decide to backtrack to only allow public comment and public comment in person. It simply doesn't make sense to me. We should be providing every opportunity to allow our students, educators, and community members to participate fully in these public sessions. Why make this change? There still is a pandemic going on, and many are being careful with limiting their outings to protect themselves and their families. There seems to be no rhyme or reason for this when I believe this board provides itself on, or at least talks about being as transparent and open as possible. If there is a reason for this, I hope to hear it being discussed tonight. Again, this seems to me such a strange move to make. I hope to get, I hope to hear some clarity on this topic this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fackenthal. Next is Mr. Tom Smith. Welcome, Mr. Smith. Oh, okay. Mr. Smith doesn't seem to be here. Mr. Gerard Rhine. Welcome, Mr. Rhine.
There's something else I can say that I, that hasn't been said already. Everything I wanted to say has been said a number of times. I have two, two children in kindergarten, and they're in the, at Linden Hill in the immersion program. And this is the, they just left the preschool, now they're in the kindergarten, and this is completely useless to them. There's nothing they're gaining from this. Every day, they get up, they sit in front of the screen, and they're unable to really communicate with the teacher because they're trying to navigate through the zoo and the buttons, and they're not using pencils, papers, they're not really learning how to write properly. Even the letters that the teachers are writing, they're writing on a board, and the letters look like numbers just because of the way they're being written. And that, and my kids can't understand what the letters are when they say, "What's this?" They don't know what the letter is because they're not being written, as you see in a book, or how you would normally have the child learn how to write. And the lessons they would normally do in school, they expect the parents to take the time at night to work with the kids, to do the lesson work or the workbook work with the kids at home, which also means while the Zoom's going on, I work, and my wife and I both work, one of us is going to have to leave work because we had to take time off for the first two weeks. For the next six weeks, we don't know. We might have to take family FMLA leave, or just one of us potentially leave a job. That's going to happen with a lot of parents. They don't have the option of staying home and working with the kids, at least over the summertime, or when they weren't doing the Zoom, the kids were home. You didn't have to sit there in front of a computer and work with them hours and hours to learn nothing, to get a benefit out of that, no benefit. I have a daughter who's in middle school. She's been doing it for a week and a half. They've already had an incident where somebody logged on who had nothing to do with the class and started spewing vulgar language until they got rid of that person. This is something else that the older students will be dealing with. There's nothing in place to stop that or to prevent that. So right now, I don't know what the whole end game of this is. The kids aren't going back to school. If you're starting out in the lower grades, you're not learning anything. There's very, there's literally no benefit to this. So I'd like to know what the whole benefit is going to be for the kid after this is over, after wasting six weeks of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhine. Next is Ms. Karen Moore. Welcome, Ms. Moore.
I am Karen Moore, political action chair for Red Clay Education Association. Despite a life-threatening pandemic, I am here to express the concerns of students, parents, and teachers as they are overwhelmed with the delivery of virtual, of the virtual learning process. The mental and physical health of stakeholders is dwindling fast. Students are overwhelmed with attending Zoom sessions back-to-back with only a break for lunch. We are seeing serious emotional issues in the classroom as a result. Parents are overwhelmed with juggling work and ensuring that their student or students are getting to the proper classes and keeping records of the multiple Zoom numbers and links. Teachers are overwhelmed with the unrealistic demands being put on them to meet online learning expectations. We don't want to ignore our, our responsibilities. We just want to do what works in the best interest of our students, not what looks good on paper. By no means am I suggesting or advocating a hasty return to in-person teaching. However, I am suggesting that we come together to find a solution that works for all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And then, lastly, Ms. Phyllis Whaler. Welcome, Ms. Whaler. Okay, I don't think Ms. Whaler is present. So we move on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from August 19, 2020 executive session? Mr. Matthews moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Bohm seconds. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are finalized. And now, may I have a motion to accept the minutes from the August 19, 2020 organizational meeting and regular session?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second? Mr. Matthews seconds. I don't think your, mic is on. Any discussion or comments? Now it is. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are finalized. Then we move on to the action items. Do you want to take the action, or do you want me to lose them? I'll do it either way.
So it is recommended that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the financial provision report as submitted.
Is there a motion to, is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Casper moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo seconds. Any discussion? We did discuss this at the Community Financial Review Committee, and all were in favor. It did pass. Okay, hearing no comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Red Clay Board of Education support the addition of a student representative on the school board as submitted.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Matthews moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Bohm seconds. All right, so what is this going to look like?
I guess my question is, how are we going to represent, or how are we going to get one student from the various high schools?
Five high schools.
Five high schools and one student representation of...
And arguably, two charters if we, because we talk about them too. No, absolutely, yeah.
Fair enough.
I, I, so I think my suggestion would be to put some parameters around it and send it to the board policy committee for them to come up with something. I mean, I do think we need to know what the responsibilities are of this person or persons, what they're supposed to do. I think it's a really fair question to ask, how can one person from our very different schools represent all of the schools? So I, I don't really know how to do that. I know what Brandywine does, and Doc, Mr. Green sent around a lot of information to us about what other school districts do. And as everybody on the board knows, only school districts that have one high school have a student rep. Otherwise, I know what Brandywine does is they have each one of their, they have a student present at the board meeting from each one of their high schools at every board meeting. I mean, another potential option would be for us to go to different schools and meet with students. I don't believe, none of the policies that have been drafted allow the student to vote or go to exec session. So the student is really there to kind of report on student issues. I think that's what they predominantly do, although they get, you know, they, 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 that's what it seems like they do based on the policies that are provided. So it would seem to me if we at least put parameters around what we want the student to do, maybe the board policy committee could come up with an option or options for us. And I say that, and Dr. Brumall's here from the board policy committee, so I don't know. Dr. Bohm, did you have anything specific that you were looking at?
I do. Thank you for asking, Faith. So Lottie Joyner, in The Student's Voice, writes, quote, "Often missing from school board meetings is the very person your policies affect the most, but that trend is changing," end quote. In The Sound Out Guide to Students on School Boards, second edition, the authors write, quote, "Across the United States and Canada, there's a growing awareness that student voice matters a lot. It turns out that students' voice, which is any expression of any student, anytime, anywhere, about anything related to education, drives all aspects of learning and teaching in schools. More than ever before, students are beginning to ask why student voice isn't driving leadership in schools as well. The students argue that school boards have to change what they're doing as soon as possible." They quote the old adage, quote, "Nothing about us without us is for us," end quote. In The Sound Out Guide to Students on School Boards, the authors also write that, quote, "Simply and routinely asking students to speak up about what they think about school board policymaking issues is the lowest form of student representation on school boards. Often a voluntary request, this sometimes happens through Facebook pages, online service surveys, or in-person student forums. Mostly, it is done by asking students to attend school board meetings and making them speak at the appropriate times that adults provide for them. These are well-meaning but poorly informed forms of student involvement, as they do not require students to have an active role in the process of decision-making beyond that of being an informant," end quote. So if we're thinking about student representation on school boards, there are actually best practices and policies from around the country. We do not have to reinvent any type of wheel because there are guidelines, and they're numerous, because over 25 states in this country have student representation on school boards. So ideas and guidelines should, that we should consider include the fact that students should be elected by peers, not appointed or elected by adults. Students should not be tokenized, so we shouldn't just have one school board member that's a student rep designed to represent the over 16,000 students we have in our particular district. The student representative should be able to voice their concerns on the issues they care about, regardless of what the adults feel. Students should have the ability to propose policies, not just provide their input, but actually propose policies on their own behalf. So they should be involved in the vision of the district. Students can participate in setting the vision and goals of a district or a state Board of Education. This has been done in numerous states. Students should be allowed to participate in rules, so student board members can adopt policies that give schools directions as they set priorities and achieve goals. These are the actual people in the schools, right? Students can be involved in the hiring process. So as school board members, students can be responsible for hiring and evaluating the district or state chief school officer, whether that person is a superintendent, an executive director, a principal, an SRO in a school, a guidance counselor, a gym teacher, et cetera. Students can be involved in money management. They can work with other board members to adapt and oversee the annual budget. Students can be involved in personnel, so student board members can join the board in managing the collective bargaining process. Students can be involved in the school calendar. They can be involved in adopting and creating school curriculum. Many of our parents here tonight, and parents have told us, and students have told us, they're bored by what they're learning in the classroom, and that's not often dictated by educators. It's dictated by outside entities. They should be responsible and be able to participate in the curriculum that is being shared with them in the classroom. So students can participate in all of these activities and more. There are a lot, there's a lot of information on students on school boards, including studies, research summaries, and examples. So I'll lead you a list of them, because you know I like to give you lots of things to read. There's the Guide to Student Voice. There's the Sound Out Student Voice Curriculum. There's the Meaningful Student Involvement Handbook. There's an article entitled Typical Engagement: Students on School Boards in the United States. There's the Guide to Students on School Boards. You guys should read some of these. They're great. Another one is How Decisions Are Made in Schools: 65 Ways Students Can Change Schools, The National Report of Students on State Boards, The National Report of Students on District Boards, The Framework for Meaningful Student Involvement, The Resources for Students as Decision-Makers, Unleashing Student Voice, Research Supporting Meaningful Student Involvement on School Boards. Another one is entitled What Is Student Voice About? Student Voice in Building Leadership: Meaningful Student Involvement Research Guide. So I think you all just need to do some digging. There's a tremendous amount of literature out there. I've read a lot of it. It's very informative. It's very exciting, and I'm really, really excited to talk about and send our idea to create policy around and have a student representative on the school board. Thank you.
Does the motion need to be changed, that we need to develop a policy? Mr. Green or...
And so just for clarity for the board, the board was recommending, or your vote is just to put a student representative on the board, and then obviously that would go before the policy committee to determine, to determine what policy would be in place in terms of what participation level of involvement that that student representative will have on the stu, on the school board, should the board vote to have a student representative on the board?
It would seem to me that we probably should have a policy developed first to see if we approve. In other words, it seems like we're putting a, what is it, putting a cart before the horse. So wouldn't it make more sense to create a committee or have a policy drawn up that we could then approve that gives some distinct parameters as to what student voice looks like? Does that, does that make sense?
This is Jose Matthews. So one of the things that I think is really important is to hear the recommendations of the policy committee and not script the committee with a policy at hand. So sending this to the policy committee, listening to some of the ideas and proposals that they may have of what they, this might look like. And the committee obviously includes all stakeholders, not just the board. So I think we're doing it in a, I really like the manner and how we're proceeding currently and not scripting the committee to, you know, adhere to something and really being open to the ideas that the committee may put forward.
So I heard that, Jose, you agree with Jason?
I didn't hardly hear any of that.
I heard that you kind of agree... I heard that you kind of agreeing with Jason's approach. Did I hear that wrong?
No, no, no. So I'll speak up. So I, I do like the approach that we're, that we are currently taking in that we are not providing the committee with the scripted policy. So if we do send something that's drafted, that's coming from the highest governing level of this district, I don't want the committee to have to feel like they're being prescribed a policy, looking at the policy, and kind of getting, providing them with this predetermined framework. So really having the committee look at a lot of the great resources that Adriana provided and getting everybody's input, not just our boards, but then really kind of being open to what ideas and points that the committee may develop. So.
The question is, do you want the policy developed first?
No. So we're sending it to Policy Committee so that they can review the subject on hand to inform the policy.
Right. But I guess I'm more with, I don't know that, I don't know that the answer is to have one person. I, I don't know.
And, and I mean, and there are...
That's one of my questions, too.
So there are many school districts across this, so I, like Dr. Bohm, have read a number of articles and policies that districts have across the state, and not, not around the state, but across the country rather. So I, I actually went to school in Chester County. And at my high school, we had two representatives. So there are school district policies across the country that do offer opportunities for two members, maybe having a senior, and then also maybe including a seat for a junior, so that instead of just getting one year, and there's somebody that they can kind of look up to, maybe learn the responsibilities for a year, and then, you know, taking senior year to really be a little bit more active, because it really does take some time to kind of acclimate themselves to the board to be able to fully participate. So I mean, there are a lot of different ways, but I mean, I, I want, I, I do want the Policy Committee to be able to have a large influence as to how, because it's a community committee, and we want the community to be able to really inform this initiative for the board.
I think if we're talking about sending it to the Policy Committee, then the motion needs to be changed because...
Ashley, I can't understand a word you're saying.
If we're talking about sending it to the Policy Committee, then the motion as, as written needs to be changed.
Well, I think the way we would do it is somebody would need to amend it at this point. We would, we'd vote on the amendment and then we would vote on the motion. Because this has been moved and seconded.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Right.
And you have to vote on the motion.
Got to vote on the motion.
So the, the practice would be to amend it if Ashley wanted to do that, and then we would vote on the amendment and then we would vote on the, the, the motion.
Well, we have to vote on this motion.
No, but if you amend it, you vote on the amendment first.
So as I'm reading the motion currently, and I'll read it just to remind everyone, so it, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay School Board of Education support the addition of a student representative on the school board as submitted. So we are sending that recommendation to the Policy Committee, and then as practice goes, they'll, they'll, they'll help inform that policy and bring that recommendation back to the board. So I'm not...
If we're going to send it to the Policy Committee, then I think we need to make an amendment that says we were going to send that recommendation to the Policy Committee as part of the recommended action.
Okay, understood.
I'm not, I'm not satisfied that, that doesn't say that.
I agree. That's, that's a good point. That's a good point.
So are you making an amendment?
I can. And I can.
Then why don't you do that?
Okay, so the amendment I'm recommending is that this be sent to the Policy Committee to develop a policy with respect to student representatives on the school board.
Second.
Jose seconded it.
That's got to be a, she, okay, she moved, you seconded, got it.
Now is there discussion?
Yes.
And then we have to approve the amendment.
So it was moved by Dr. Newton and, and seconded by Mr. Matthews.
So I have something to say. So I would like to say, I would like us to say, so I'm saying it, that we need to approve a student member. So we're saying we approve a student member, so that needs to go into the motion. We approve, the board approves a student member, and then we're going to send it to the policy, board policy, to come up with an idea of what that looks like.
Correct.
We need to say that we approve a student member.
Right. It's all the same, Adriana. So the motion, the act, the motion is, it's the recommendation that the Red Clay School Board support the addition of a student representative on the school board as submitted. It is the additional recommended that the, whatever I just said, Maria, can you read it back? But it's basically that it be sent to the Policy Committee to develop a policy for the addition of a student representative on the school board.
Okay.
So it's both pieces together.
Thank you very much. And can we say representatives? Because what I'm hearing some of you say, even Kathy, is that perhaps it can't just be one person.
We could say, we could say representative parentheses as.
Perfect.
So if it's more than one, that fits the bill.
Perfect. Thank you, Faith.
Is everybody okay with that?
That works.
I mean, I don't know. It depends on what they come up with their policy. We don't know what's going to happen.
We don't know. Yeah. And that's...
That just gives them the flexibility.
Yes. I think that's terrific.
I think that's great.
Mr. Wilson, the same.
So that the, the policy, we're going to have the Policy Committee work on detailing what they can do and be involved with.
Right. And they'll come back to us.
And then they're going to come back to us.
Okay, so probably then their recommendations need to be back to the, be brought back to the Board of Education.
Correct.
That's fair.
Is that fair?
That's what they do.
Any policy gets approved on board.
Any, any, any policy comes back.
Any policy's going to be approved by us anyway.
In a two-step process. Hugh presents it, one meeting for, for our reading, and then the second meeting.
The normal thing that we usually do.
And it's put out for public comment. So Dr. Brumall has something to say. Step up to the mic, please. We're having trouble enough with the mask, even up here.
Would this be for a goal to implement in the spring, next school year? What's the timeline of completing this?
So I think that we could probably have a couple of months of the Policy Committee meeting. I, I say, let's see where we are in November, and then we can revisit that. I mean, I mean, we have to see what the policy looks like and before we go into implementation of it. So maybe having a report back in November, maybe just to see where we are.
I think the question more is around, when is the starting point for a student rep to represent the board? And again, just being mindful that the same folks who are likely to be on the Policy Committee are also on the reopening schools committee, just kind of giving sight in this. Not that this isn't a priority, but being mindful of, of where we are. So just in terms of timeline from the board's perspective as to when you want, want this policy instituted so that the Policy Committee could then know how much work that they would actually have to put into getting that back to the board.
I don't think that November is doable because my concern would be...
Just ask them for an update as to where we are, not completion.
No, but I, I'm not saying completion. I'm saying even November for an update on where we are. Right now, we're with kids in remote learning, and the time should be spent on how we're going to move on after the six weeks. I, I think that that is the priority right now. I'm not saying no to a student representative, but I think that saying time from district leadership should be spent working on this policy and reporting back in November is taking time away from the, the important issue for families right now. And I would say that more families are concerned about their kids and virtual learning and plans in place post-six weeks than parents are concerned about having a student representative on the board. So I would say that an update maybe in December, when kids might be back, but, or even January, but I think November is taking time away from where it should be.
And again, I would just generally ask the board, is the goal to have a student representative begin on the 2021, 2020, so is it next school year where we want to have a student representative seated on the board as a student representative? And then that way it gives us a timeline to then work backwards from to develop the policy. And I think to start a new school year, which would be July 1, if we said we wanted a student representative to sit, serve on the board starting July 1 for the 2021, 2020, 2022 school year, then again, that gives us the, the process to then work backwards from. And we can continue to keep the board engaged. If there's information that board members want to share, obviously with Dr. Brumall to help perform that policy through our student voice efforts in terms of engaging students, you know, if we want to keep this, to Dr. Bohm's point, a part of which students actually have some say in it, it gives us a longer window of opportunity and time to really think this through so that we're not just creating something, again, for the sake of creating it, but we know we have a deadline by which we're talking about next school year would be that starting point where we would want a student representative on the board.
So I amend the motion to say to be implemented by July 1, 2021.
Okay. But, and I do think we should have a report in a few months. And I also want to say, just to Ashley, I appreciate your concerns about where our priorities should be, but I think I may be the only board member who participated in the student town hall on August 30. And those students were saying they really want a student on the school board, so it definitely is a priority for students. And I think that's one thing we have to be cognizant of as adults and as parents. We shouldn't get in the way of what the students want and what the students are requesting at a grassroots mobilizing level. I just want us to keep that in mind as we move forward.
And, and, and we can work together.
We can work together.
360 degrees to make it happen. But, you know, we're hearing concern from the Greenslips. That's just a few, because I'm having constituents, parents in the city that are having a lot of issues, what I heard tonight. So, you know, as we leave here, when we get our chance to talk, we have to be mindful. We know what the governor is saying what will happen. So like I said, 360 degrees, I think this is a great thing. So we have a lot of work to do, and we are busy, but that's what we're here for. So we can't miss out on a junior and a senior hoping to be working with us next year, but also handling the states of need in this pandemic. There's a lot of things that's on the table. We have a lot of upset, red clay parents out here. So, you know, Mr. Green, you're doing a great job. But, you know, it's, it's the way you're battling, you know, to keep everybody happy.
Praise me. I appreciate that. Again, I just want to be clear, as we manage it all, and this is just as important, again, depending on who the stakeholder groups are, our students, and through our student voice process, I think we're continually engaging with our students. So again, the matter before us is just what's the timeline? So again, if it's the July 1 for the start of the 2021 school year, which is next July, then again, I think that gives us enough clarity around how we need to continue to work through all the processes that we have in place, the superintendent, student advisory council. I have some additional information based on the August 30 student town hall in terms of adding students to the diversity committee. So I think there are a number of processes that we can work through to incorporate it. I just think the matter before the board is to determine or decide in your vote whether you're going to support a student representative on the board, and then we'll do the due diligence and necessary work to come up with a policy based on all the information, again.
And, and, and in that policy, once we develop it, we will get student input on it as well, right, through your student advisory council?
That will be the point of why we would want to start the next school year, to take some time to engage.
Sure. That gives the students also time to, you know, figure out who would be their representative or representatives, whether it's a, a model like Mr. Matthews said, a senior, a junior-senior type of situation, or, you know, various schools, whatever the case may be. It's, instead of rushing into it, you know, gives district administrators, Policy Board committee members time to kind of put this together with, you know, and make it an attainable goal as opposed to just, you know, kind of copying from what other, I mean, it's good, what, what you said, Dr. Bohm, as far as getting information from other, other schools. We don't have to recreate the wheel, but you're kind of taking it all, taking it all in and giving us all time, giving all the policy, all the stakeholders time to, you know, create this so that it's thought out and, and, you know, comes off like we would want it to come off in terms of a, you know, a seamless process. So, and again, with Mr. Green's recommendation of, you know, that, that's a good starting point. July is, you know, start of the fiscal year, it started the board year, that type of thing. So that, it all kind of makes sense.
So just to be clear on what I understand the motion to be at this point, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education support the addition of a student representative on the school board.
With an amendment that says that the, a policy committee will be developed, or a committee will be developed to, develop a policy for the student representative.
To be effective in the 2021, 2022 school year. Okay. Just so we all, we all know what we're voting on. Okay?
You have that, Maria?
Okay, good. Hopefully better worded than what I just said, because that didn't make much sense. I think we got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item?
Motion passes.
Yeah.
Yay!
So it is recommended that the Red Clay Board of Education acknowledge and accept September 15 through October 15, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month throughout the Red Clay Consolidated School District. And again, yesterday marked the start of Hispanic Heritage Month. So it again is the recommendation that the board approve it. Just for a little information, again, the Declaration of Hispanic Heritage Month, it is, again, with great enthusiasm that I present this to the board, that on this day, September 16, 2020, that the Red Clay Consolidated School District proclaim, acknowledge, celebrate, and recognize the Hispanic Heritage Month here in Red Clay. Hispanic Heritage Month is a story, has a story of its own. In 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim the week of September 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Week. In 1988, the observance was expanded to a month-long celebration. It is the only celebration that starts mid-month and honors the contributions of our Hispanic community. The celebration acknowledges Latinos who are known for their diverse cultures that embrace family, tradition, youth, music, culture, and the arts and dance. The date was chosen as it marked the anniversary of five Latin American countries' independence, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile also celebrated their independence days on September 16 and September 18, respectively. There are 16 Spanish-speaking countries in the world, Argentina, Chile, Cuba, Dominican Republic, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Peru, Uruguay, Bolivia, Costa Rica, Ecuador, Honduras, Panama, Puerto Rico, Venezuela, and Spain. Delaware is home to a population of about 9% Hispanic descendants. As a superintendent of the Red Clay Consolidated School District, it is my pleasure to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month on behalf of the Red Clay Consolidated School Board of Education and the Red Clay community. Again, so the vote before you is to acknowledge and proclaim Hispanic Heritage Month thus far moving forward in the Red Clay Consolidated School District.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Who, who, so moved. Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthews, I'll give it to Mr. Matthews. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say a big thank you to Darrell and the district for working with me on this. This is something that I, is very near and dear to my heart, being one of the only Hispanic elected officials in the state, and really just acknowledging the contributions that the Hispanic and Latino community have given to Red Clay and to our, into our community. And not only acknowledging all of the milestones, but also acknowledging the hardships and the challenges and barriers and the places, the bright places that we've yet to go. And we continue to strive for that and work for that. And I am just so thankful for our district to be able to embrace Hispanic Heritage Month, to be able to acknowledge it, and to our board for allowing me to be able to bring to this, bring this to the table. So thank you all. And I just share my gratitude tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we move on to the consent agenda. Is, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's moved by Dr. Newton and seconded by Mr. Wilson? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. And thank you so much to the speech clinic for their donation. That is quite a generous donation. So now, Mr. Green, your superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, those who have come out to make public comment, and more importantly, those who are joining us via Zoom. My monthly report, we've been busy, and I first and foremost want to acknowledge those who have come out to speak publicly regarding the stress and pressure that they're feeling as it relates to the, the remote learning environment. That includes our parents, families, but also our educators. This, this hasn't been a situation where we have kind of dismissed or ignored those voices. We find ourselves where we find ourselves, but we're diligently working with the guidance and the information that we have on behalf of the state to make this work. And so I've been... And so I've been busy since our last board meeting. Immediately following our last board meeting, I had the opportunity to participate in a virtual, uh, community town hall with Representative Michael Smith on August 20th, uh, where we shared the updates in terms of where we were with the six-week remote start, understanding that we are a week and a half in, and again, there are a lot of pressures that a lot of our families are feeling, and there's a lot of information to sift through, whether you're looking at national best practices, whether you're looking at things that are happening regionally, or more importantly, what's taking place in our state. And so there was an opportunity to share updates, but also answer questions about our Red Clay virtual or remote restart for many of our families. Shortly thereafter, uh, we had an opportunity to meet with the superintendent, student advisory council as a means of processing the upcoming, um, town hall that we have scheduled. And during that process, we had student representatives from each of our high schools. Uh, we also include representatives from the two charters that our board authorized. So we did have representatives from Delaware Military Academy. Unfortunately, no representatives from CSW, but we still continue to engage those students again as they're part of the Red Clay community. But just to kind of structure and frame the discussion, uh, during that period of time, there were a series of five questions led by Dr. Bond, who leads our equity office, um, and Mr. Goldner, the head of secondary schools. Um, we, we discussed, what has it been your, uh, student experience as a student and student leader in their building? One was also processing what areas do they feel student voices can or need to be elevated? And one of the interesting things that came out of that meeting was the fact that they felt that while they were, um, chosen and were thankful to be representatives or student leaders within their building, that they didn't want to feel like they were the voice for the voiceless and that there were a number of avenues where students throughout the district still needed the opportunity to be heard and not just necessarily heard through student leaders. The other one would have you or your fellow students or student groups advocated for change in your school and your school community. And so that was just an opportunity for us to listen and engage our students to really feel where they felt their advocacy was coming from within their respective schools. Um, there were some consistent trends, but then it was obviously some unique nuances based on the individual school cultures, which I think will help inform, um, a student representative on the board, both from, from a positive standpoint, but also the challenges. Because again, we have unique programs throughout our high schools where the student experience, while may be similar based on where they find themselves, um, there are different processes again. And what are some ways in which you can create a more just and equitable education environment? And we talked about everything from, um, coursework to, you know, participation in clubs, uh, whether that's the minority student unions that we have or the BSU's that we have in our buildings. Advocacy, um, in terms of inclusion, everything from working and supporting students with disabilities. So again, it was a number of, of insightful, uh, things that, that the students during that, that particular meeting, were really engaging and helping inform us. And what would you share with other students who, um, would like to be involved in their schools to elevate their representative voices? And again, they felt that sometimes students are tapped to, to, the, the leaders are the ones who are the high achieving students or the ones who participate in sports or who are in clubs. But again, really creating avenues for students to have the space to be more inclusive and engaging with one another. So again, that was a, a powerful moment, which again, was to help shape and form the next upcoming student town hall. Uh, myself and several staff members also had the opportunity to participate in the Red Clay Student Run Town Hall on race and inequality, um, led by a dynamite student from Conrad, um, Nathan Cho, who, um, really, I, I would say captured student voice and, and orchestrated and facilitated a, a Zoom town hall. That was probably one of the better Zoom meetings that I've had the privilege of participating in since we've all been Zooming. But they've had five particular acts or four in particular. One was transparency, um, making sure that students know everything about advanced courses and more programs. Also in general, so that was advocacy, just in terms of having students, um, more black and brown students in, in higher advanced placement courses. And really ensuring that on the front end, that students know, uh, what those choices are. And so working with, again, Mr. Goldner and Dr. Bond, and also our school counselors and really advocating, there were a number of Red Clay staff members who were also on that call, um, who, who spoke up and really again, heard the students. Their second act was hold students and teachers accountable, uh, for their racist actions. They were just talking about a number of encounters that they've had, uh, whether that would be in the hallways, which they felt may have been the presence of staff members, or more importantly, encounters with staff, and really looking for shared accountability throughout our district as it relates to, um, race and racism. And then student voice inclusion on a diversity committee, um, they want at least two to three student reps from each Red Clay High School. And so I'm happy to announce that again, at the next September, the next diversity committee meeting on September 29th, um, that is the agenda item, um, where Dr. Bond again, had an immediate follow-up with those students to start having, um, student reps within the building that will be a part of the new formation of our diversity, uh, committee. And then obviously, um, number four, which is a student rep on the school board. So we can report back to, uh, Nathan and his fellow, uh, student leaders. Um, again, that we've, the board, uh, more importantly, has, um, heard that request and have followed through on that request. And then the last thing that they actually had was, we asked that you get back to us on how you plan to enact these requests within a month from today. And so we were able to, again, act quickly and engage those students. And again, this has been a part of our platform, just in terms of, regards of, um, elevating student voice and supporting them. And so I want to give a plug because our next virtual town hall meeting, um, is scheduled and we have an open call right now for students, um, to submit. It went out yesterday in the newsletter, um, that was submitted out to the district. So students have an opportunity, um, to submit their deadline for video question submission, uh, which will be extended through September 22nd, 2020. Again, the videos will be limited to, um, thirty to forty-five seconds. If you're under eighteen, they're asking for the parent's approval. Parental approval can be at the start of the video submission, after the parental consent pause for a few seconds. And again, so we can make sure that we continue to put more information out, um, to get student submissions. The deadline again for video and question submissions for the next town hall. And Dr. Bond, we are scheduled for October the first, correct? Which will be held on October the first. And again, this is the second of a series of six student town halls. I would say we fell woefully short in our marketing of the initial and inaugural town hall meeting because it was promoted or branded as a student town hall. But it was rather an opportunity to kind of foundation set where we are as a district with the number of things that we have going on relative, um, to diversity, equity and inclusion, race and racism throughout Red Clay. And again, so the, the second town hall, which is incorporating a lot of student feedback, a lot of student input, is scheduled for October the first. So again, student submissions for questions and our video, um, submissions, the deadline is September 22nd, 2020. So, Dr. Bond, I followed through and I gave you your plug.
And is that at 6:00 PM? Darrell?
It is, is it 6:00 PM, Dr. Bond? Yes, it is at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
And so again, hearing a number of families, um, discuss and, and also our educators, just in terms of where we find ourselves a week and a half into this six-week remote restart, um, where we are again, communicating that, you know, phase one, which we are in phase one. You know, hearing, you know, again, in the spring, we, we fell woefully short of, of expectations, just in terms of engagement. And now we're hearing in some spaces, you know, again, that we are, um, providing more than I think many within our community feel that they can handle, especially in a remote learning environment. So again, those, um, concerns and, and, and communications are not falling on deaf ears. And so as we work to transition into the phase two of the hybrid reopening, um, a couple of factors again, that we need to be mindful of, is the gating criteria that the state has issued and, and continually puts out with regards to the percent of persons positive, um, the number of new cases and then hospitalizations. And so as of call, as of today, we were still, um, indicating that we were in phase two of, um, or excuse me, scenario two of the state's reopening guidance. Um, and with that being said, there are right now, uh, six charter schools and roughly, um, three districts throughout the state who are, um, have some form of hybrid or in-person. Two of those particular districts, they're all downstate districts. We know many of our private schools are also in place and, and they're getting requirement in our schools that generally have enrollment of two hundred and fifty or less, um, which again, allows them the opportunity to do the social distancing. We did do the questionnaire and I know, again, many of the families who just came out to ask, we do have that data. We had a total of eight thousand five hundred and ninety-two respondents to that survey. So when we unduplicated the survey responses, there was roughly about fifty-six percent response rate from families. We were somewhat delayed because again, many of our schools, um, were trying to actually do cold calls and use whether it would be the Chromebook distribution and other avenues to get family input for those who didn't respond, um, when that went out electronically. One of the things and challenges before us as we continue to really look at it again is equity. So when we figure a school such as Cook, um, and their response rate, seventy-five percent of Cook respondents want in-person learning versus twenty-five who want to continue with remote. And so when we look at the social distancing guidelines, and I know we have a team who would actually be going out to North Star, um, the early part of next week to really start looking at how do you balance out, uh, those classrooms based on the percentage and numbers within those respective schools to ensure that we can meet that need for that in-person instruction when we look post-six weeks of a remote start. HB, for example, had seventy-four percent of their respondents or their families respond for in-person, with twenty-six percent wanting to continue remote. And then roughly about, um, fifty-four percent of the families indicating that they would still need access to transportation. And when we know a school such as HB Department Middle School, for example, where they have five runs that services the city of Wilmington. And when we look at a traditional sixty-eight passenger bus, we're roughly allowed to get twenty-three students on that bus. So if we have five runs of sixty-eight students and we can only get twenty-three on a run, we would have to divide those runs in half for that percentage of families. So those are some of the, again, the continued nuances that we're working through, um, logistically. And I get it, right? We can say, look at neighboring states, look at neighboring districts. I mean, there's a reason why our neighboring districts who instituted plans, released those plans and then had to pull those plans back after families have made choices. So this isn't a necessary thing where we're not trying to get students back in school. I have three children of my own who are dealing with the same thing many of our families are dealing with. And the reality of it is, this isn't just a unilateral decision that I can make, the board can make. There are also gating criteria on behalf of the state that we have to continually be mindful of as we look at a safe reopening, as we look at equity. My heart goes out to every child, every family with a student with disability. You know, how do we prioritize? And so we really do want to really figure out, how do we come together as a community and prioritize that need based on need and ensure that we can be equitable in our reopening? And so we're continuing to work through those processes. Again, we have the data from each of the buildings. As you get toward, um, you know, some of our elementary schools, for example, I'll just go down. Heritage, for example, had seventy-one percent requesting in-person versus twenty-nine percent. Brandywine Springs, seventy percent. Our early years program had roughly about sixty-eight percent. Uh, North Star had about sixty-five percent. Conrad, sixty-four percent in-person versus thirty-six percent remote. Richie had sixty-three percent in-person versus thirty-seven remote. Cab again, sixty-three percent versus thirty-seven. The John Dickinson School was an even sixty-forty split, which that's where we kind of fell as a district. Sixty percent of my families indicating, for those who responded again, um, for a response rate of about eight thousand five hundred and ninety-two unduplicated responses. And then our Meadowwood program was about fifty-eight, forty-two. Marbrook was fifty-eight, forty-two. McCain, fifty-six, forty-four. Forest Oak was fifty-five, fifty, fifty-five, forty-five. Linden Hill was similar, fifty-five percent, forty-five percent. Richardson Park was fifty-three percent in-person, forty-seven percent, um, remote. Fifty-two percent for Skyline versus forty-eight percent. Warner was fifty-two percent in-person versus forty-eight percent continuing with remote learning. And then once we got to Moat, it flipped. Where fifty-one percent wanted to continue with the remote based on their respondents versus forty-nine percent. AI High School was forty-eight percent versus fifty-two percent. And we understand that this is conditional, right? This was a, a, a point in time, you know, I guarantee if we had to, and that was one of the other challenges, depending on when you collect the numbers, ultimately based on family situations in their home, they also, you know, shape their opinion of what they will want in that particular setting. So again, we are taking those numbers. We also currently have a COVID staff return questionnaire that's out to our staff members. Again, using a neighboring district who had a similar, um, initial rollout where they had forty percent, sixty percent. They weren't able to meet the staffing demands as it relates to, again, ensuring that we have the health, safety requirements in place as we hear, again, many of our staff, whether that would be ventilation, other PPE factors and things in place where we have, again, those adequate things and measures in place for our schools. But again, ensuring how do we do that with a smooth transition so that we don't overload a particular building? And so for that staff questionnaire, it, it asks questions such as, I intend to return to face-to-face, um, environment once the decision is made. I plan to return to face-to-face, but would volunteer to work remotely if necessary to serve the needs of students who wish to learn from home. I have one or more underlying health conditions that may put me at higher risk for serious coronavirus illness and I intend to provide medical documentation and request and accommodation for remote teaching assignment. And again, upon Red Clay Schools reopening, if my child's school or place of care is closed or unavailable due to COVID-19 related reasons, I intend to request a remote teaching assignment. If teaching assignments need to shift to accommodate families to choose to remain learning remotely, I would prefer staying in my grade level or subject area rather than staying within my building, in my building rather than grade level or subject area. And again, that's just an opportunity for us, that survey closes this Friday, I believe. Ms. Smith, if I'm not correctly, if I'm correct, um, to again, get feedback from our staff as we look at what the demands are within our respective buildings to meet that demand for in-person versus remote learning. Again, so these processes continue. You can keep going. Just some highlights, um, again, from our, our, our week one. Again, we are challenging times, but I, I, again, I have to thank our educators who have stepped up and who are going above and beyond to meet the needs and, and doing all they need and all they can and more. Again, to respond, um, we've had high rates of student engagement during the first week. Approximately about nine, oh, well over ninety percent of our student population have been engaged, um, through this process. Again, about a ninety-six percent engagement based on weekly attendance. We've had the, the, the new Fix-It Bus, uh, providing daily walk-up tech support, um, around the community. Again, we know that that's not meeting the needs of everyone, but again, it's another opportunity and we've been, a lot of positive feedback from the Fix-It Bus. Again, taking that out to the community to help support families who might be experiencing any difficulties with their, with their Chromebook. We've also increased the bandwidth in all of our schools, uh, we've upgraded Zoom accounts for our educators, online classrooms set up for devices, uh, for all students, supplies were given out. And again, online learning materials distributed at the schools. So thank you to all of our schools, all the volunteers who distributed the resources that were necessary again, for us to be effective as we can be in this remote learning environment. Again, I've seen more frequent communication and contact from our schools to home. Again, really encouraging our families to reach out to your buildings. And thank you to our schools, our educators, school leaders for being responsive, um, to those communications and contacts. We expanded again, the support from home for internet access and then the new health and safety protocol for Red Clay employees and visitors. We've instituted about twenty-six hundred, uh, you knew, you, unique URLs for COVID testing for employees as well, which again, is a part of our restart. We're also in conversation with the county, um, to set up testing sites as we begin to reintroduce students to school for any students and their families who will want to have access to COVID testing, um, which will be a part of. And so again, just for those who may not have been aware, again, the testing criteria or the gating criteria for reopening schools are the new cases per one hundred thousand. So when you look at where we currently are as of yesterday, we're in the red for new cases. That was roughly at about a hundred and eight, um, in terms of the daily new cases. For percent persons pod testing positive, against for scenario one, for us to welcome everyone back to in-person learning, the threshold is less than three percent. For scenario two, which would be again, any kind of form of hybrid of an in-person learning, which would be between three to ten percent. We were hovering around four, four, four point five percent. Right now, we are at seven point two percent with the latest daily average, which was again, yesterday was five point four percent. So the fourteen-day rolling average is now at seven point four percent. And then the average daily hospitalizations per one hundred thousand as of yesterday was at fifty-eight. And so out of those three gating criteria, two out of the three are in red. But again, based on the call that we had today, we were told that we're generally still in the yellow phase, which is welcoming again, hybrid. And as of now, there are six charter schools across the state. Three public school districts, Woodbury Seaford and Cape Penlopin, and then Sussex Tech, I mean, excuse me, Polytech, which is a, um, single, uh, Votech School District in Kent County are the only ones who have some form of hybrid outside of private schools. some form of hybrid outside of private schools. Next slide. Next slide. Keep going. And so again, this was the data from the, the safe response to reopen. Again, fifty-six percent response rate overall with eight thousand five hundred and ninety-two. Again, in-person was sixty percent, continuing remote was forty percent, forty-four percent still are looking to use transportation, and then not using the bus was roughly around fifty-six percent. And here is a curveball that was thrown our way as a district. And again, in full transparency, as superintendent, we initially voted and wanted the delayed start to fall sports. As of last week, Delaware Interscholastics Athletic Association, along with the Department of Health and the Governor's Office, has seen fit that fall sports are safe to play, especially high-risk sports such as football and wrestling, voting tomorrow night to propose or to support a September eighth, Sept-September twenty-eighth, excuse me, restart to fall We have a committee in working with our athletic directors and working with our coaches, working with our Villanueva principals to see what, if anything, would look like in Red Clay with regards to if the state board approves fall sports tomorrow night. This isn't anything that as a district we were anticipating. It was not on our radar, again, but there is a lot of advocacy throughout the community. I've probably gotten more emails with regards to restarting fall sports as of late than it has been with regards to reopening schools, which is the challenge before us. There are a lot of needs throughout our community that we're trying to meet and a lot of things that unfortunately are out of our control as we try to manage that, whether that would be the science, whether that would be the decision-making, whether that would be the gating criteria that we've held ourselves accountable to, to a safe reopen. And so again, we will wait to see what that restart looks like tomorrow evening based on the state board's vote, whether or not they vote to approve the fall restarts to ultimately determine what that looks like in Red Clay. And again, there are a number of factors that go into that. So our high schools will likely start distributing and sending out communication to families for those students who have participated in sports or are looking to participate in sports so that we don't put ourselves, and again, that was a tight timeline of a seventeen-day window from the time that announcement was made before we can start planning. There are still a number of questions, outline questions around the health and safety that we're waiting on the Department of Health to actually have to formally respond to, again, as to whether or not sports would be playable in this current environment in Red Clay. And then lastly, I, I truly want to thank again, because with, with all of the things that have gone into this remote start, we've given out over fif- fourteen thousand devices throughout Red Clay and our tech department doesn't necessarily always get the recognition that they deserve in response to what's going on. And so I want to thank the following individuals in our tech department, those in our user support, Cara Godino, Menta Berry, Jonathan Curry, Thomas DeShields, Derek Forsberg, Fred Kozarza, Brittany Lanham, Laura Martin, Neil Patel, Edward Shaw, Adrian Tiscana, and David Zelina. And many of those folks you don't see, but they work tirelessly behind the scenes. Our network and infrastructure support, Troy Yeager, Rob Pritchard, Gerard Mallon, Thomas Mack, Robert Phoebe, Keith Cox, and our very own Mr. Tony Clemens, who has been instrumental in helping us get these virtual board meetings and the various iterations of our board meetings up and running. And then lastly, Jessica Sweeten, Donald Arbera, and our head of our technology department, who has spent tireless amounts of time, is Christine Uli, for leading our tech team and ultimately Dr. Ted Abbott, who oversees operations in our tech department. I will also include Dr. Abbott, who was helping board members troubleshoot their devices prior to the board meeting starting. So that's tech support on the spot. So thank you, Troy. Again, just in closing, note to our families that we, we, we truly are committed to our educators, we truly are committed. This isn't about window dressing, this isn't about putting a glossy plan on paper to, to make Red Clay look good. This is the reality that there, we're a community that's split and divided, you know, and on, on a number of things, but more importantly, where we stand as it regards to reopening. So there's my goal, there's my hope, that we can galvanize around the needs of our community, the needs of our individual schools, to really look at equity and prioritize how we phase in reopening and continue to work with the state to get clear guidance around the health requirements that are necessary to ensure that we mitigate and not create environments where students and their staff are adversely put at risk. And to our families, I apologize sincerely to the pressure that you're feeling within your own homes. This isn't anything that, you know, I, I personally, if I could sit in each and every one of your homes and create an individual plan for you and your family to make you, your child, and your family's whole, I would gladly do that. But again, I think as a, as a county and as a state, when we look at where we are, we're taking that guidance and we're trying to put that guidance in place as best we can and understanding that again, there's a, for every article, research paper that I read that says one thing, I can find four or five that are going to say the opposite. And we have to follow the guidelines that have been put out by the state. We're trying our best to implement those guidelines, but more importantly, do it in a safe and orderly fashion. And so lastly, just some reminders, nominated Educator of Support Professional of the Year by Friday, the state has instituted a new, similar to our Teacher of the Year process for support professionals, which include, and I'm gonna mess it up if I talk about the employee groups, but it's our parent educators and others or support staff members. So feel free to nominate a Support Professional of the Year by nine eighteen, which again, is Friday, to our students for the October first Student Town Hall. Submit your videos and questions for the next Student Town Hall by nine twenty-two. And again, it is Hispanic Heritage Month, so thank you to all of our Hispanic and Latino community members, staff members, support staff, partners, for all that you do to make Red Clay the district that it is. We celebrate you and we thank you for all that you're doing. And then again, opening for Red Clay CFRC and Facility Committees are available. So if you have an interest to serve on the Community Finance Recovery Committee, feel free to do so. And our facility members are looking for members of the public to serve on either two of those committees. Again, that concludes my board report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That was very insightful. Thank you very much. So now we move on to items submitted by the board and committee. So it's committee reports and items submitted.
Okay, so items submitted by the board. I would like to discuss the way our school board meetings are going to be delivered. We had, I was under the impression after the July eighth school board meeting when we passed the motion that stated that we would continue Zoom school board meetings under the declaration of emergency by the governor, that that's what we were going to be doing until further notice. So I got confused in July, in the, at the August school board meeting, thinking that when it was in-person, that we were going to be able to do both. That is, we would have the choice of Zoom or in-person, both for our parents, our community, and for our school board meeting. I had no idea that we were not going to have that option and was quite surprised, as a matter of fact, that parents and community members would not have the Zoom option to speak and that school, that none of us would, school board members. So I am proposing that we make a motion that until further notice, all board members, board meetings be a hybrid until the governor declines to renew that state of emergency. We have right now, I believe, about two-hundred-and-thirty-nine people online watching us, and they cannot make comments, and that's a problem. We've had upwards, I think, of over four-hundred people at our Zoom meetings, and it's been going very, very well. And people need the opportunity to be heard. That is what we are about in Red Clay, and that is what we do well. And we need to give them that opportunity. We also need to make sure that everybody feels safe. I don't want to force, whether it's us sitting behind this table or our parents, our teachers, our public, to come to a meeting to speak when they don't feel comfortable. And I have a concern with that. And that, to me, was what felt like tonight. We were under a lot of pressure to be here, and I, I don't miss school board meetings. And you know that. But I felt like if I didn't come and raise the issue, I didn't have that, that option tonight, and I was concerned. I, this is the first time I think I've stepped in a building for a meeting since March, and that concerns me. And I will get a COVID test in a couple days. So I think that I want to make that motion that all board meetings until further notice be hybrid until the governor declines to renew the state of emergency. And if there's a concern with that, I think we need to get an AG's ruling. If that option is not appropriate, then I would propose that we go back to virtual until the state of emergence, emergency is lifted. Okay, so I put the motion on the table.
Can you restate it, Faith, because I don't know that I really heard it.
Yes. I make the motion that all board meetings until further notice be hybrid until the governor declines to renew the state of emergency. If this is an issue, I would request a ruling from the AG's office. If that cannot be fulfilled, I would, I make the motion that all school board meetings until further notice be returned to virtual until the governor declines to renew the state of emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So I want to say, um, thank you.
Jose, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
No worries. So I just want to say thank you, Dr. Newton, and for your comments tonight and for the motion that you proposed on the table. And thank you to Dr. Adriana Bohm for mentioning this back in July, for the motion that you made and that this board had approved. I know that the both of you have really spearheaded this in, in promoting safety and options for people so we can all feel comfortable. So many people at home and, and the audience may be wondering why I'm not seated at, on the stage tonight. And I think that we all have to make sure that everybody involved feels comfortable through this process. And I, I definitely want to make sure that options throughout this pandemic are provided to all of our stakeholders involved, and I am in support of that motion.
I, I understand.
Ashley, you gotta be a little louder, okay?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I understand the hybrid concept and the concerns there. I have a problem going back to full virtual if we can't do hybrid. As we're working to bring students back in and we're going to be asking our staff and students to come back in, I forget the exact date of our next meeting, but it's going to be right around the end of the six weeks where we're talking about bringing staff back, and then we're saying as a board, we're not comfortable being in person for a meeting. It seems a little hypocritical that we would say we're comfortable bringing our staff back, but we're not comfortable.
So, so if you listen to Darrell's report, we're providing families the option. And what Faith is saying here and what's being proposed is that we have that option too. So when we go to that phase, those who will want to be at home and those who will choose to learn virtually or want their families to stay virtually.
And as I said, I'm good with hybrid. I'm not good with full virtual. So that's my opinion. I'm okay with hybrid if there's some way to do it where if you or Faith or other board members are uncomfortable being here in person, splitting it hybrid, what I'm saying is I am, I do not think it is right for the board to go full virtual if we're saying we need to get our kids and staff back in school.
Bear in mind, the custodial staff, nutrition workers, many administrators, even teachers, there, there are staff members that are in the buildings currently and have been since March thirteenth. You know, there's some that have never left, so.
Yeah, and my view is, I think as the leadership, especially as we are asking our staff to come back in the buildings, that we must be here. So I could support a hybrid for the community, but I think our board needs to be here in person. I think it's irresponsible as a leader not to be here. That's my opinion. So I would support a hybrid for the community, but not for the board.
Mr. Wilson.
Say hybrid for what now?
She supports a hybrid for the community.
Okay.
But.
But I think the board needs to be present.
She wants the board here no matter what.
And you're standing on that because of, like Jason just said, for principals or administrations that are in the schools right now?
Yeah, and we will be asking our teachers to come back.
But right now, our teachers have the option.
Yeah, but, but they're, but we're the leadership, and our leadership do not have the option.
And we had the scenarios tonight that Mr. Green gave us of the percentage that want to come back, but if they choose to stay home.
But I don't think that applies to principals and assistant principals and the, the district office staff.
That applies to the families, the way I understood it.
To the families.
For the families, yeah. Yeah, so I, I, I'm with that. And I say, hey, as we move forward, we know the only one to keep us shut down is the governor. That's the only person can keep us shut down right now. We know we're trying to shoot for this three percent, we don't know if we're gonna hit there. Who's going to, he's gonna be the one to say that the sixty percent that say they want to come back and go into the school, yes, no problem. You're saying that we as board members, if everybody else is working and have to come in, we should file a suit. All right, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, that's just my, that's my opinion.
But that's, that's your opinion. That's why it's open for discussion.
Yeah.
If a board member don't feel safe, I'm coming to, that's the night they have to be absent.
I, you good? I don't want to interrupt. It's just hard to tell facial expressions with the mask.
It is hard, it is hard to tell with masks on.
I, I can't hear you, Ashley.
So the other thing is, I don't know the specifics of how the questions were worded to staff, but I was under the impression that they also needed to have some kind of documentation if they weren't coming back, not just they don't want to come back because they feel unsafe. So I don't necessarily think that staff has a yes or no choice. I'm coming back, I'm not coming back. I, I don't think it's that simple. Perhaps I'm wrong, but.
And I would just say, at this point, we're not discussing staff, we're discussing how we're going to proceed with board meetings moving forward. And yeah, I mean, we have staff since March thirteenth when we closed, they haven't missed a beat. Again, our transportation, school nutrition, the issue before the board right now this evening is, how do you want to proceed with board meetings moving forward?
Moving forward.
And the question again is, based on the, the governor's orders around, it's virtual or in-person, there's really nothing that stipulates hybrid? And the question before us is, how will we make hybrid work? So in a situation like tonight, how will we manage two or three of you on a computer versus being present? And that's what we would have to figure out. And we would also have to modify the board approved calendar, which was approved in June, which is one of the reasons why we're here tonight in person, because that was the approved calendar. I know Dr. Bohm, on several occasions, did raise the issue around the legal opinion. And again, it's based on how we noticed the meeting, it's how, how we proceed with the meeting. And we noticed this meeting as an in-person meeting and really gave the community for those who couldn't come out, the option to watch it via Zoom. So we're not minimizing their participation per se. The notion around in-person public comment was to limit the number of people who would in essence come in. So if the hybrid portion of it would be for those who would want to make public comment virtually, we would have to figure that out. But I think there might be some nuances or some challenges just in terms of how we manage a meeting with some in-person, some isn't. But again, I think what's before the board right now is to determine how you want to proceed for next month with meetings moving forward.
Yeah.
I, I have a problem, or I shouldn't say I have a problem, I have a concern with Ms. Sable with what you said. You're telling us to put aside our personal health concerns for our families, and I have a real big issue with that.
She didn't hear. Say it again, please.
You're telling us to put aside our personal health concerns for our families, and I'm not willing to do that. You have no idea what is going on health-wise with any of us. And so your comment was blatantly, you're just absent. That's unacceptable. It's also inappropriate.
I actually didn't say you were absent, I said I'm not for fully virtual. So I didn't say take an absence.
Correct, to go fully virtual.
Right, so, and I'm saying I'm not for that. I think that we should have to be here.
And I just said, so my response to that is, you're asking me to put aside my personal health concerns, okay, for the board meeting? That's what you're saying? And that's unacceptable.
For the board meeting. That's what you're saying. And that's unacceptable.
I'm saying hybrid I could do if that were a possibility. But that I personally am not okay with virtual. That's my right to have an opinion.
Right.
If you feel that that's me saying your health doesn't matter, I apologize, that's how you take it. But my point is, if we're going to be getting students and staff back, then we have an obligation to also be here, taking the necessary precautions. And just like other people who want to do virtual, if that's how the board votes and that's how it goes, but I am saying.
Wait, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And I understand concerns about health. I understand the risks that people have. I am saying that I am not for fully virtual.
When staff and students return full-time, I don't have a problem. But we aren't there yet, and we don't know when we're going to get there.
Okay, and that's fine. That can be your opinion and I can have mine.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have some comments. So we are in the middle of a pandemic. And with technological innovations, I believe that our community should have options. And if they opt to participate in person, that should be an option. If they opt to participate virtually, that should be an option. At the July 8th, 2020 board meeting, I asked, well, I publicly said that moving forward, members of the red clay community should be allowed to participate in board meetings virtually. And I asked for a legal opinion on that issue because I'm not a lawyer. And I didn't know. So I made a motion, which was seconded by Mr. Matthews. And this was the motion. I motioned to continue Zoom board meetings under the declaration of the state of emergency by the governor and to receive legal clarification moving forward for any future board meetings. The motion was passed unanimously by this board. During that meeting, Board Member Casper asked for clarification on the motion. And President Thompson responded, quote, "For as long as the state of emergency is in effect," end quote. You can go back and listen to all of the audio. Then, a month later, at the August 19, 2020 school board meeting, we had a four-minute-plus-long conversation on getting a legal opinion on whether public comment could be made by Zoom. Because I'm very, I think it's very important that the public should be allowed to, to come and make public comment virtually. Because we've looked at our numbers and they've skyrocketed over the last few months, right? Zoom attendance and public comment. Tonight, out of the 13 people who signed up to make public comment, five didn't, they didn't appear to make public comment. And some of them said they were online, but they had to be here. That was a mandate, right? So at the August 19 meeting, we had a four-minute conversation on getting that legal opinion. And I specifically asked, what are we going to do about the September board meeting? And I said, people like Zoom meetings. That should be enough, you know, that should be available to people. I then referenced the minutes of the July 8th, 2020 school board meeting in which I made the motion, which talked about the format of board meetings moving forward, where I requested legal guidance and clarification on Zoom meetings and public participation. Right, so now we're into a month. I asked if we had received legal feedback from our lawyers. And I asked that multiple times during that four-minute conversation. So we had that conversation. Then on September 8th, because apparently we had not received legal feedback, on September 8th, at the board planning meeting, I brought the issue up again and made the case more than once that the public should be allowed to participate via Zoom and that they should be allowed to make public comment via Zoom as well. I was told by board leadership at that time that, quote, "There had to be a vote on that," end quote. However, there was never a vote to mandate that the public had to attend our board meeting in person if one wanted to make a public comment. I then raised this question again on September 14th, nearly a few days ago, in an email I wrote to the board. In the email, I specifically asked who had made the decision that the community had to show up in person when they made public comment. I also asked when that decision was made. I was informed that when the board voted on locations, the board voted on public comment being made in person. I'm not sure how voting on locations translates into people having to come into a physical building to vote. So as of the board, as of this morning, I haven't looked at my emails this afternoon, I've been working all day. But as of this morning, we still had not received a legal opinion on the motion that was passed at the July 8th, 2020 board meeting. And we have never, I would say, I have never voted on participants making public comment in person. So I'd like to know why and how this board or members of this board decided to move forward with holding an in-person meeting that stipulated public comments could only occur if they, if they happen in a physical building. Because that appears to be in violation of our July, our July school board meeting vote on the resolution that was passed unanimously. But in favor of Dr. Newton's recommendation that we should offer this as a hybrid and that people should have options, we'd like to have an option, right? And I think that keeps people safe if they're concerned about their health and wellness. And if people want to come in, that allows them the opportunity to participate in person. Thank you.
All right, so I was going to make an amendment and then break it down into do different motions. Is that agreeable? Okay, so the, so the first motion is going to be that all school board meetings until further notice be hybrid until the governor declines to renew the state of emergency. Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
And is that, now there's discussion. Are you saying that's for the board members as well as the public?
Yeah, parents, board members, and et cetera, will participate in a hybrid format. In person and or Zoom.
I don't believe that we as board members should be doing that.
So you got it?
I can't hear.
Kathy, they didn't hear you, Kathy.
Yeah, I believe, as I mentioned before, I can't support Faith's motion. Not for the community, but for the school board members. I believe that we as the leaders, and particularly as the leaders that will be sending, that have sent and will be sending our staff back into the buildings, that we need to be here as well for our school board meetings. I can support it as to the community, but not as to the school board members.
And then Mark, you said something I didn't hear.
No, I, I was getting ready to say something, but I stopped because I want to hear from that motion where we hit it.
Yeah.
Kathy wants, Kathy can't support it because she thinks school board members should be here in person no matter what.
Right, and I think community members, we can do it virtual as to, I don't have a problem doing it.
She's okay with community members and the public and the teachers. But she's not okay with the school board members.
So that's a negative, so we have to take a vote.
Any other discussion? You want to take a roll call, Maria?
Can you read your, not read, can you restate your, your motion one last time?
Yes, I can. A motion that all board meetings until further notice be hybrid until the governor declines to renew the state of emergency. So parents, board members, et cetera, would participate either in person or from Zoom.
Dr. Bohm?
Yeah.
Mr. Casper?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
He's absent.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No, I cannot support it as to the board members who are the leaders of this district.
So right now is a tie until Mr. Matthews returns from being indisposed.
Here he comes.
You may read or reread the motion so that he knows what he's voting on.
Do I want to read it? Mr. Matthews. Sorry. I made the motion that all board meetings until further notice be hybrid until the governor declines to renew the state of emergency. Parents, board members, et cetera, will participate either in person or from Zoom. And we're waiting for your vote.
I vote to approve. So yes. So it's four yes, three no. Motion carries.
Can I, and I, Dr. Newton, I don't know, I would just ask the board to modify the calendar that was approved in terms of location for board meetings. Because this environment here at CAD gives us more flexibility with technology to be able to pull off a hybrid board meeting. As opposed to having more to read that site, which again presents some equity challenges, but again, that's for the board to discuss. But if, based on your last vote, we would humbly ask that we have board meetings and host them here for hybrid purposes. Just because of the ability here with technology to be able to manipulate, pull it off.
So I knew that for as long as there's hybrid meetings, that they are, that the in-person portion of the meeting is located at CAD Calloway School of the Arts.
Second.
Discussion. Do you want to do a roll call though?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, do I need to make another motion in case hybrid is not legal?
And so.
I mean. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, we're.
Yeah, I would. We're just going to leave it there. Okay? That's it. All right.
We're just going to assume that it's legal? Is that?
The pleasure of the board.
I mean, I'm, I'm, that's, that's why I didn't support the. I don't, I don't know that it's legal. Right.
I think it's worth getting input.
Okay. The board wishes to get input. Again, the executive order for the governor speaks to virtual board meetings, does not speak to hybrid.
Correct.
But we can figure out with that interpretation of a hybrid meeting.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to report on the CFRC meeting. I attended that on September 9th. Dr. Ammon was present and gave us a really thorough briefing on technology issues as well as facility issues. It was very beneficial. He talked about the cleaning on the buses and the buildings and all the work that's being done in the buildings and has been done on the buses and in the buildings. It was very informative. As well as the tech issues. And Mr. Green commended all the members of the tech organization. And I have to second that because they've really come up with some ingenious solutions. And I think they've, they've done a great job. As to the CFRC financials, the real issue right now is tax receipts, which we won't see until October. There is anticipated a 2% delinquency rate, but we'll have to see what that is like. Right now, you know, the monies just aren't in and revenues are at 57% and expenditures at 16. But that's not really meaningful in any way because it's so early in the fiscal year. So we've got to look at the, all eyes are on the tax receipts. And indications are that the state side is rather gloomy as to next year's budget, but we shall see. We are looking for additional members, as is the facilities committee. And I can highly recommend the CFRC as a, as a committee that's really worthwhile being involved in. Not only can you understand the budget and contribute to the budgetary issues in red clay, but you'll learn an awful lot about red clay. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to just say a couple of words about the primaries that took place yesterday. Even start, starting with the city of Wilmington, Trippie Congo becoming the president of city council. And that moving forward, and I know we have a great relationship with the city, the county and the state. Would really want to work hard with our new council members and Ria Clay together moving forward. Our talk with Trippie and, you know, prior to that, he's open and willing to, you know, bind, bind greater together with Ria Clay and the city of Wilmington to help us. And then with Matt Myers as well on the county. And then with our state representative. So I think the primary was great. We know this is a democratic state. A lot of these folks that were voted in one of the primaries will work as a January for the city and even in the county. So I just, I'm happy what went on and I'm just hoping to move forward that we can have a greater relationship with our city, county, and state government to help us in red clay. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and report on the DSBA meeting. I did attend the DSBA meeting on September 2nd, I believe it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, September 2nd. It was the first meeting we had in person since the governor closed down the state. As you can imagine, there was a lot of discussion centered around reopening of schools and so forth. The legislative priorities were just, were proposed. There's going to be a legislative committee meeting in October. There's a, and I know Ms. Thompson passed or submitted an email about the Juul class action lawsuit. There's a potential for Delaware school boards to sign on as litigants. For those of you that are unfamiliar, Juul is the, it's a vaping product. And, and the, the districts are, well, many members of the state are forming a class action suit because of the way the product is marketed, targeted to children with, or teens with like fruity flavors or birthday cake flavors or, you know, all the different stuff that makes it appealing to somebody because it's not yucky. The, the other thing that came up was, and in regards to that, Dr. Marinucci, the executive director of DSBA, is going to check with the attorney to get some more information. But it, it appears as though, from everything that he receives so far, it's probably a good idea for us to get on board. If, if the lawsuit goes through, we, you know, could find ourselves into some, some kind of revenue from that. One of the things that was discussed, and, you know, this is in, in relation to what Dr. Newton was bringing up. The Christina School Board issued a resolution to see continued ability to hold the virtual hybrid meetings. But at the time, nothing had been, so other, other boards are seeking legal opinion on that, I guess is the reason I bring that up. The issue of unit hold harmless language was being discussed. As you all know, September 30th is usually the unit count. This year, due to COVID, the enrollment numbers are significantly down throughout the state. Yet people know that the students are out there. We just, you know, whether they're being homeschooled or, and homeschool is not just as easy as saying, I'm going to homeschool my kid. You have to register your child with the, you have to register your homeschool rather with the Department of Education. But, you know, the, the idea of, you know, we created a budget based on anticipated number of students in classroom seats by September 30th. We don't have those students in seats. We don't have any students in seats. So there's, there's a language being brought out. I know they've extended the September 30th, I think it was to November. So till November, so there's going to be some more discussion based around that as in relation to unit count. And then there was just some discussion based around the campaign to educate the whole idea of, of remote learning and so forth. The DSBA did take the position that they weren't going to get involved in any type of media outlets along with some other people, just, you know, felt it was best to take a neutral position on that. And that was pretty much it. There was, obviously, there was a roundtable discussion and that most of it dealt with how various districts are facing potential reopening. And all of it was just talk because we still have to wait to see what happens from a state level. So that, you know, as far as being in the right phase. So at this point, that's my report for DSBA.
Hey, Jason, I have a question. So on the Juul lawsuit, is there any action that we need to take regarding that? Is John at the legislative committee, is he going to ask for input or how is that, what's he going to do? I didn't really understand it.
So at some point, like, we didn't take any action that night. One of the things that. One of the things that, as I said, for us, I wouldn't feel comfortable taking a position to represent Red Clay without having discussed it in an, in an open forum with you folks and, and taking a position publicly. It does appear that it's not going to cost us anything. So at this point, I mean, if you're asking for my opinion, I would say we jump on board if the districts do, if it moves forward. The only, the only, I think it would be like a percentage of compensation. So let's say we were awarded $100,000. Then whatever the attorneys would get, they would get their cut of it. So maybe we get 60 or, you know, whatever the percentage is. But it's not going to cost us money upfront. In other words, we're not going to have to pay to be a part of it. So I mean, John's position was, it's probably a good idea to get on board if it goes through. You know, back in, I don't know, what was it, 15 years ago, 20 years ago? There was a big lawsuit against, might have been 25 years ago now, a big lawsuit against the tobacco companies. And this is the new, this is the new devil in, in teen, you know, habits, ban habits, vaping, juuling, that type of thing. So, I mean, I'm not going, they're going to bring it up during legislative committee.
Which is October 4, I think. So do we want to have a sense of the board?
I, I would love to get a sense of the board. I don't know that I'm going to be at that, at the legislative meeting, because they're asking for one.
Yeah, there's one rep, is it?
And I'm, I'll be there.
Okay, yeah, so Martin will be there.
I may be there too, I don't know, because I, I'm the alternate. I, I don't.
Okay, so if, if one of the two of you, they are asking just for one board or one representative, not representative and alternate, just due to the spacing and so forth. So I, I would be mindful of that. But, um, I, I mean, again, is it legal to, am I allowed to poll the board? Or, you know, can we get an idea? Does it seem like it's a good idea to jump on board? If it's not going to help, or if it's not going to hurt us, but it could potentially help our bottom line?
Well, we write John tomorrow. And see what he says. I, I know it's not doing us no good, why would we sit here? But, you know, get our views.
We, we were, but the only way to get him is here.
I know.
Yeah. So.
I mean, would it be appropriate to take a motion, I guess? What, okay, so how about I make a motion that should the DSBA get on board with the lawsuit against Juul, that Red Clay be a part of that motion, or be a part of that lawsuit?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's hard to say get on board with something when we don't actually have the information in front of us. I mean, it's kind of high level right now. I said, I think it's hard to get on board with something when we don't have the full details in front of us, especially when we're talking about a lawsuit. I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I, I think what the idea is, is just if DSBA says, yeah, we're going to be a part of this, and, you know, then districts need to be, or before DSP can, DSBA can take that approach, they have to have votes from the districts to see whether or not they're going to be a part of it. So if they move forward, would Red Clay want to be a part of that?
I agree with Ashley 100%. I think we need more information.
Okay.
I don't know what we're voting on.
Well, it was what, it was in the memo that I forwarded around from John.
John had issued that statement of.
But I read that. And we will consider correspondence that comes through our emails. However, we can figure in and talk about it. If anyone is prepared to vote, then you want to put that in there.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I think you do great to say, next month, we're going to have a competition. We'll put it on these messages to talk about it.
Well, and Mr. Green needs to, and his team needs to take a look at it as well. I mean, I just.
So again, this isn't necessarily for districts. This is a class action lawsuit and litigation by school boards, states, and municipalities. And again, I think that's why it's coming before DSBA. It's nothing from our level in terms of administratively that we've been asked to weigh in on. And it's been placed at the school board level.
And I think parents need to be able to weigh in. Community members need to be able to weigh in. I mean.
So I guess the question before the board would be, what additional information would you need from DSBA to ultimately make a decision for Red Clay?
Well, I think we should put it on the agenda to talk about it next month.
That's a good suggestion.
And if you need some parents, you'll talk about it based on the correspondence we received.
That's a good suggestion.
Just send us the report or send us something.
Say it again?
Send us the report or send us something. I didn't understand.
Well, that's what we need to write, John.
Circulate the, the information that was provided to the board.
I was just going to say, we could just recirculate that email.
You guys need additional information from DSBA to help the board make an informed decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we should add it to the agenda for next month.
Ms. Stevens, just make a note for board planning to add Juul litigation.
So with that in mind, I, I'm going to assume I should withdraw my motion?
I guess.
I think you should.
I'll, I'll withdraw that motion.
Yep.
So I had some things to report. Are you done, Jason?
Yes. You got to speak up.
Yep, absolutely. So I, the first thing I have on here is facilities committee. We just had a facilities committee meeting this week. And as Kathy and Darrell mentioned tonight, we are looking for people to join that committee. So please feel free to contact the district, particularly specifically Ted Ammon's office if anybody's interested. We also had a CAD Calaway Fund board meeting on September 9. Really kind of just looking, we were brainstorming on some ways and some creative ways on how we can fundraise in a COVID world. So that fund really helps subsidize a lot of the, you know, arts initiatives that CAD offers here. And so definitely, you know, just trying to make sure that we can kind of keep up with supporting the initiatives that we offer here at school. I also wanted to bring up, encircle back to the SRO committee that the board approved. I know that RCEA submitted names to us some time ago of people who they want to be considered to be on the committee. So I wanted to submit some names. I know that we've delegated this task to Darrell and his office to put together. And some of the names that are on my list include Giarmina, Dr. Giarmina Gonzalez, DeShawna Neal, Tracy Mansa Murphy, Devin Henson, Grace Ottley, and Sarah Green. So I want to put those names forward for consideration for that committee for the next steps, whenever we are going to proceed with that. And that concludes my items submitted for tonight.
Any other comments?
I do have a committee report. But before I present on my committee report, I want to say to Superintendent Reed, thank you so much for your superintendent's report because it was very informative. And I learned a tremendous amount from that. And I really was excited to see that you included the town hall, wrapped from the students in your reports. And I actually have a report on the student town hall that I don't have to give it because you did such an excellent job. Thank you very much. So I would like to now report on the university committee meeting, which was held on 8/25/2020. At the meeting, members discussed the work they had been doing in terms of the curriculum and in terms of curricular development, while they were simultaneously thinking about returning to school in the midst of the pandemic, which they talked about highlighting racial disparities and also in the context of the Black Lives Matter movement. The members also talked about the bank of lesson plans that were available to educators who are interested in discussing the isms but weren't sure where to begin. And they gave a lot of resources, so I thought that was great. In fact, Mrs. Jenny Furman, who was also pictured in Superintendent Reed's report, teaching her class, gave a really interesting report on work she had been doing in the district and trying to learn more about this topic and diving deeper into the data. They also talked a lot about self-reflection and how to work on internal bias and implicit bias that people had and try to learn about their biases. And I would just have to say that it was a great meeting. And I was excited to watch them talk about the work they've been doing. And I was also enthusiastic about the possibility of moving from reflection, which I think is really important, towards more policy creation. And I definitely heard that as a theme. And I look forward to our next meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? With hearing nothing, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Sabo moves. Dr. Bohm, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for attending and.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Have a good one.